People of Ascension Parish, we are so happy to have you joining us from the comforts of wherever you are. The live and virtual event is an extension of our continued efforts in bringing transparency and access to our local government. Let me tell you a little bit about the format of the meeting this evening. Parish President Clint Quinmal will give a brief presentation and participants will be able to call in to submit questions that I will read aloud. And then Parish President will directly answer those questions during this live event. You can press star three on your phone at any time during the event to submit your question as our team is standing by, ready to talk to you and take your questions. We will also have two interactive questions that involve audience participation. So let's kick things off and hand it over to your Parish President Clint Quinmal.
Welcome, and thank you for attending. I'm Parish President Clint Quinmal, and I'm excited to try a new platform for our Ascension Listening Tour by holding this event virtually. Tonight, I have some key staff members with me. C A O John Diaz, CFO Patrick Goldsmith, D P W East Director Ron Savo, D P W West Director Supervisor Regina Thomas, Director of Planning and Facilities Ricky Compton, Director of Recreation Michael Keane, and of course, Director of our Community Outreach Raven Jackson. The real competitive advantage in any organization can be summed up in two words: smart people. I made it my point to surround myself with smart people. If you have a problem, get them in a room and get to work. So I'm gonna do a brief presentation, and then we'll go ahead and get started with your questions tonight. So I kinda wanna do a little brief overview of not only what the parish has achieved, but also some of our problems and issues that we're currently solving. So at first, I wanna give up an Ida update. Ida was one of the worst storms in a while that we've had here in Ascension Parish. We've all had to struggle with our electricity and our debris, trees down. We had 410,000 cubic yards of Hurricane Ida debris has been removed from Ascension Parish roads, and over 144,000 cubic yards of Hurricane Ida debris has been removed from state roads. Now, roadways are done, and we'll shift our focus to our waterways. One of our great accomplishments of the first two years is bringing transparency to our residents in our open checkbook, which we refer to as Open Finance. As most of you are aware, a big part of the reason I ran for office was to bring more transparency to parish government, because transparency is the first step in building trust with our residents. I can't tell you how excited I am that this administration took upon the Open Finance idea, and with the help of our council, from concept to reality. We have merged four years and over 2,000 pages of P D S into a comprehensive, user-friendly dashboard. In addition to building trust, more government transparency leads to better-informed residents as well as more government accountability. We've also undertaken early childhood education. This is one of those ideas that when we first started out in January of 2020, we had the discussion of where do we start thinking out the box? Yes, we're responsible for roads, responsible for drainage, responsible for recreation, but what are we doing to change the lives of the people in Ascension Parish? And so, we all know that our children are our future, and the time to invest in them is now. We have a joint effort of the Ascension Parish Government, the Sheriff's Office, School Board, and the public library system to do just that. The new educational center should be open in 2022, and it will be paid for through the Juvenile Justice Program Fund. Onto recreation. This past year, we hired two new leaders to our recreation team: Michael Keane and Dirk Deketoe. Between both of them, we're working to improve the field conditions at all locations, acquire grant funding for new projects, and work with local organizations such as Leadership Ascension to help elevate our recreational abilities here in Ascension Parish. The department will also receive additional funding from the sale of the sewer assets to help with our money to go even further in bringing state-of-the-art options to the parish. You know, we had a couple other accomplishments recently, and what you see in the photo is our new dog park. We currently, with Leadership Ascension, were able to cut the ribbon at the Prairie Dog Park in Prairieville. And prior to this project, we helped fund Ascension Leadership Group with their Field of Dreams, the All Abilities Field in the city of Gonzales. It just won an award. It is this type of partnership that brings our community together and allows us to achieve more. And we look to partner with Leadership Ascension more in the future and bring some great projects to Ascension Parish. So let's take a look at infrastructure or transportation. So we got good news and bad news. It's a pretty staggering number. Ascension Parish is $1.25 billion, and that's a big B, behind on our transportation needs. The good news is we have a plan, and three that will probably never catch up, but we're making up ground. So far this year, we have leveraged $32.5 million to help with our small eight- to ten-million-dollar transportation budget to spread further. Quite a list of projects they're working on, but just a little added note, we're just weeks away from completing the Henry Road Roundabout at Highway 30 and the clearing and grubbing for Roddy Road, US 61, and LA 35, which gets that area close to construction for safety widening. We're also working closely with our legislators to work on additional interchange at I-10 for our parish to keep up with our traffic concerns. So bringing transparency again, this is something that we're able to go ahead and showcase some of the work that goes on around the parish on a weekly basis. So we'll be doing weekly updates to better inform all of you on what we're doing, where we were, where we're going. We had a break due to Hurricane Ida and having to go ahead and clean up all those trees and get back to zero, but we're back on track, and we'll be starting again this Friday with our vegetation and drainage updates. So in the drainage, big picture, we have several projects that we have listed on the screen here. And it's a quote that our Drainage Department on the west and the east side refer to, and the statement is, "Our waterways are like our highways. Can't accumulate capacity unless we have plans to grow capacity." And just like our highways, we gotta keep them clean, we gotta keep them maintained in order to move water, just like we move traffic. But we do have some big items that are coming to fruition to start construction on in the next coming months. Those three projects would be the Fish and Frog Bayou Locks over in the Dutch Town area, and that's over at Spanish Lake and Bluff Swamp. We have the Law Ridge Levy in Galvez and Santa Ma. We should start some type of construction in January. And finally, our new river dredging project in the city of Gonzales. This will be part two of the dredging project. Since we've already completed, our crews have from the Gate Valves all the way to Bayou Goudin, and so this will continue from Bayou Goudin all the way to the We're Behind Walmart. And we should be starting that project hopefully in early parts of December. So excited about those big three projects, which are monumental projects, have been going on for years. And to be able to start construction is certainly a great monumental improvement, and we have the Drainage Board, as well as the administration and staff, kudos for bringing all that together and getting those projects started. So we also wanna look at how we take a regional approach to things. And drainage is no different when we take a look at our waterways, how they affect our parish boundaries and go beyond those boundaries. It's critically important that we work with our neighboring parishes to ensure that we're all working on our regional projects. This slide here, if you take a look at every census block on both sides of the Bayou Manchag and on both sides of the Amiet River, this region in green would represent 0.7% of the state's landmass. Yet, since 1990, it has represented 20% of the entire state's population growth. You can't add that many homes this close to our major waterways and not impact drainage. And so it's critical that we work with our neighboring parishes like we have when we've worked with E B R and with contracts, helping to clean Manchag, working on the Spanish Lake Basin and Bayou Manchag with Iverville, working with St. James in the southern part, and meeting with parish presidents and leaders there, as well as Livingston. We have a great project that has been funded on Highway 22, and that came out of our work with Livingston Parish. So super excited about these projects, super excited about looking at drainage, not from a parish standpoint, but also from a regional standpoint. And that's important as we move forward, looking at how we handle storms and different weather events in the future. So also, we have to look internally as well. So our population has increased by 18%, and once again, that's a lot, too much, too fast. We saw the major growth in the northern parts of our parish, mostly on the western part and on the northern part. Working with Kendon Keast to do a full review of our plans, codes, and ordinances to achieve the goals of making sure they're all in agreement and close the loopholes, and determine how we can make changes to ensure better growth for existing residents and new residents coming into the parish. So we all know that we had a record number of rain this year, and we're no longer getting 10-year storms. We're getting 25, we're getting 50, and even more than that. And our current code cannot handle those rain events. And so we must adapt to the weather pattern that is changing, and that requires us to take a look at our codes and how we intend to grow, not only for tomorrow, but for the next 10, the next 20, or next 30 years. And that's what we're trying to achieve during this moratorium period, is to take a look at it and start to question how we've done things, how we've planned, is the infrastructure keeping up with growth? And I think we all know that answer. So what do we do now so that we can grow better moving forward in more of a responsible way, not only for our residents that live here, but also for the residents that are moving here? And so this is a very important time, as well as a very important opportunity. And so we gotta open up each box, take a look at what we're doing, and how we may need to do it different. So I'm excited about that. Took a trip, a field trip today with Kendon Keest, representatives today, and different staff, and other organizations will be doing the same all week on their visit here, just taking a look at situations in the field, in the parish, so that we can understand our previous regulations and the cause and effect of those regulations. So this is a pretty shocking map. This is when we had it at the majority of our open Listening Tour meetings where residents came. So when you take a look at the Old Mill area and Plantation Creek area, that's south of 74, east of 73, north of Cornerview, and west of I-10. In 1998, there were only 15 homes in this 589-acre area. Today, the same area now has 740 homes. So when you look at that, and you look at those low-lying areas and those pastures and those fields, and how much water that can take until it hits those drainage structures, in 1998, that was 77,000 gallons of water during a one-inch rain became runoff. Today, 1.6 million gallons. So from 77,000 gallons to 1.6 million gallons of water runoff during a one-inch rain event. This is why we have to take an aggressive approach to planning, and not only on traffic. I mean, when you look at that photo, how many traffic improvements have been made in that area for this amount of growth? How many major drainage improvements have been made? Not enough. And so this is a very important slide to know what we need to do moving forward for the next 20 years, and how we need to take a look at our codes and ordinances. So now it's time to listen to our residents and ask questions and get answers to those questions. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to our residents.
All right, thank you so much, Parish President. One thing we are focused on is improving our understanding of what our residents think about where they live. We have two poll questions to help us understand how you feel. I will first read the poll question aloud and review the possible answers. Then I will repeat the question so you can select your desired answer. To start, in your opinion, what is the most important problem facing the parish of Ascension today? The six possible answers are traffic congestion, drainage, overdevelopment or population, growth, poor road conditions, lack of recreation and cultural events, or other. Again, in your opinion, what is the most important problem facing the parish of Ascension today? Now I will reread it, and you can select your answer by pressing the corresponding number on your phone or keyboard. In your opinion, what is the most important problem facing the parish of Ascension today? Press one to select traffic congestion. Press two to select drainage. Press three to select overdevelopment and population. Press four to select growth. Press five to select poor road conditions. Press six to select lack of recreation and cultural events. Press seven to select other. We'll give you a moment to get your desired answers in, and we will revisit what the most popular answer is in just a bit. Right now, we are going to kick off our Ascension Listens Event questions with our first online submission, Anora. Parish President Anora is asking, "How do we stop the aerial spraying for mosquitoes? It kills everything but the mosquitoes, and I do not want poison sprayed on my land. We need to protect our green infrastructure, especially our forests, farms, trees, and natural green spaces that are accessible to the public in all parts of the parish. What are your ideas and plans to preserve our green space throughout the parish?"
Yeah, that's a great question. Aerial spraying only occurs after major storms, when we see an explosion in mosquito populations. And what we do is we have the ability for residents to kinda call in and take their property out of the sprays, spraying lines, and then so if they have livestock or they have anything like that, that they just don't wanna have their property sprayed, we're able to take them out. We do receive a lot of calls from people who want the spraying. And so we're trying to find a good balance there on the people who want it and the people who don't. So we're continuing to work, this is probably the first time since when we sprayed during Ida, that we have the option for people to call in and have their properties excluded from the spraying. So we're looking to go ahead and have more options like that in the future, and of course, take a look and have EPA and DEQ always review what's being sprayed and the normal procedures that we have done in the past and how we move forward in the future. So it's a great question, and as far as green space, we're trying to solve that issue too as well, because we ask that a lot in Ascension Parish. So we see large tracts of lands throughout Ascension. How much money do we carve out of our transportation, our drainage, our recreation budget, or our money that we have stored away for storms and recovery in order to buy property? There's really not a lot, because really, if there's any available money with our small transportation budget, we like to spend it on roads. And so, you know, there are several ideas that have been floated around about, you know, carving out a part of the budget or looking at additional revenue to buy green space, and instead of subdivisions, taking a tract of land and making it a park. So we're still kicking those ideas around, and it's important for us to get residents' input on how... We all think that we should achieve this. I don't wanna force anything on anyone, especially anything to do with taxes. I'm a conservative at heart, so I like to make sure that we're spending our money wisely, and we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. But if we're looking to get aggressive with those type of things in acquiring property and securing it for large parks, and I'm not talking about small things, I'm talking about large recreational areas, then that's gonna require some type of funding. And so we're looking for our residents to provide some solutions there. What do they think, and how to achieve that goal of having more green space secured for our future? And so we don't have the answer to that right away, and I don't hesitate to admit that, because that's a very tough question on where that revenue's gonna come from. And so that's something that I would like to talk to the public about and get their input, so that I can be their representative in whatever path they choose they wanna go into securing more green space.
Great, thank you, Anora. We have another question from Carl and Libby from Darrow. When will Brown Road and Walter Reed Road be blacktopped?
So our current system is done by a rating system. And so what we go, we go, and we rate the roads on where that money needs to be allocated for our overpaying. I'm not sure about those two roads specifically. We have, of course, thousands upon thousands of roads in Ascension, so I can't answer through those two. I know that we have a rating system, but we'll certainly take a look at those and see how they rate and see where they are, and maybe we can reach out to the citizen and let them know where they may be on the list of overlays.
Great, thank you so much, Carl and Libby from Darrow. We have another question coming in from Daniel from Dutch Town. Can you explain what can be found on the open checkbook? How is this supposed to be used by our residents?
Yeah, I'm going to pass this on to our CFO, but I do wanna state that this was a tremendous achievement for this administration, and spent a lot of time in making sure that this was user-friendly and had the data that brought transparency to parish government. It's one thing to think and want an idea, and it's another thing to bring things to reality, and I can't be more proud of my staff for doing just that. So I'm gonna pass that question on to Patrick.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. And you know, we've heard the word transparency a lot tonight, and I wanna thank you for pushing us to get this done, because this is not just transparency, this is accountability. And in terms of finances for the parish, we want the residents to be able to see in real time where the money is coming from, where the money is being spent. So what this project did and what Open Finance does is it takes the 300-page budget book, and it puts it online, and it puts it at the fingertips of the residents, and it's real-time data. The data is updated every week, and so like today, I went on and looked at the revenue for sales tax, and I was able to see that so far we've collected 103% of what we budgeted. So that's a good thing. We're a little bit ahead of the game with those revenues, but it's updated in real time, so I could see that as of today. And what this does is it provides the revenues, it provides how much we're spending, it provides the information in tables, you can look at graphs, you can look at timelines, and it lets you see how much is budgeted for individual departments. So you can see, for example, recreation. If you want to see how much money they're bringing in, how much they're spending, and where it's going, you can drill down. So it's a great system. You go to the parish website, there's actually a link right there for Open Finance, or you can go to the finance page under departments, and there's a link there as well. And so you can go there, you can click on revenues or expenditures, and then you can start drilling down. And as you drill down, you see more and more detail. Again, you can see the graphs, you can see charts, you can see information by funds, you can see revenue by type. So if you're interested in mental health, there's actually a feature on the home screen where it's a search feature. You type in "mental health," their budget pops right up. So we wanted to make this as user-friendly as possible, because we want the residents to use this. And we even put on there, "Please provide feedback to us" on our Facebook account or any way possible, we've got phone numbers, because we want them to be involved in the process. So right now, you can see the revenues and expenditures. That's phase one. Phase two is going to be seeing payments to vendors. That's coming hopefully in the next few months. You'll be able to drill down to payments by individual vendors, see how much they're paid in a year, and see what they're being paid for. Phase three will be payroll data. So hopefully, a few months after that, we'll be able to roll out the payroll data. You'll be able to drill down by department, see how many staff, how much they're paid, you know, the type of positions that we have. And again, it's just another way for transparency in the parish. Just a few other quick things that kind of go along with that, with the transparency. If you look in the budget, and actually, the budget hopefully will be adopted this Thursday at council, you'll see that for the first time, we're doing multi-year budgeting. So you'll actually be able to see for capital projects what's planned for the next five years. You can see Move Ascension, like you mentioned, you can see recreation projects, you can see it broken down by all those types. And what we're hoping to move to in the next few years is actually have the entire budget multi-year budgeting. That's kind of the trend that's going on, and we need to plan for the future, and we need to start thinking out five years where we want to go and where we want to be. Something else that's also helped our budgeting process is we've been getting our department heads much more involved, wanting them to be the owners of their budgets, so they're driving and really helping us make sure the money is going where it needs to go. We want to make sure the money's spent efficiently, we wanna make sure it's spent effectively, and those department heads are the best ones to do that. So this year, we actually had them do online budget submissions to start the budget process. So we've got a lot of things going on in budgeting and finance world that are helping us build towards that transparency, more towards the efficiency, the effectiveness, the open finance, the multi-year budgeting, and also using those electronic systems to try to help us get a better handle on exactly where we need to spend those precious dollars that the parish has.
Thank you so much, Patrick Goldsmith, for your answer to that question. We are going to give you guys the answer to our first polling question. Now, that first question was, "In your opinion, what is the most important problem facing the parish of Ascension today?" Based on those who are online, 30% say traffic congestion, 24% say drainage, 27% say overdevelopment and population growth, zero, poor roads and conditions, 12% lack of recreation and cultural events, 6% say other, and 1% of you guys were undecided. Parish President, do you have any responses for the residents and their response to that question?
I think, you know, if you ever attend any Planning Commission meetings, that fits pretty accurately. You know, I think that it's obviously traffic and drainage that is the number one and two issue in our parish as we have grown over the last 20 or over 25 years, and that growth can... I think that to understand that growth continues, it contributes to both. So as we continue to grow, and how we've grown has contributed to both drainage and transportation issues. And I think that's where we are in looking at our ordinances and code, is how do we help both those areas in adjusting our code and adjusting our ordinances for where we go in the future? Obviously, any elected official would love to have a time machine and go back and fix or go back and plan differently with the anticipation of growing so fast, but that doesn't exist. And so we have to take steps now with the weather pattern changing. There is no better time than now. And so I think that's... That would fit accurately. I think that is dead on to what has been consistently the two top issues in Ascension Parish for the last two decades.
All right, thank you guys so much for participating in the poll. We're gonna go and continue with our questions from online. Jerry is asking, "Is there a way to know when the pumps are on?"
Yeah, if you go to USGS, you can look at the... Those gauges of each of the pumping stations, and they're about a 15-minute delay, but you can actually look at when those pumps are turned on. We try to make a post as often as we can, just to let people know that the boatway will be closed and we'll start pumping down. But yes, you can go to USGS, put in those gauges, it'll show the location of those gauges at those pumping stations, and you can monitor when those pump stations are turned on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much, Jerry, for submitting that question. So Patricia from the city of Donisonville is asking that she is hearing that there is going to be new things coming, and she just wants to know about how Donisonville is developing as a city as a whole.
So we got a lot of stuff going on in Donisonville. Our early childhood education probably is the biggest item that hopefully will start to change the future of the West Bank in Donisonville, giving kids a head start in school, and making sure they have the proper nutrition, making sure there are daycare services. I think that's huge. I think that is changing society in a major way. And so in addition to that is how do we spur economic growth? And we do that by looking at grants, looking at cultural grants, things that we can jumpstart and move forward with creating jobs over on the West Bank. And, you know, I think you look at what's happening downtown in Donisonville, there's some great things happening. We've got to take advantage of that. We can't miss that opportunity. We've got to add to it. And so, yeah, stay tuned. There's some exciting things that are going to be announced in the future for the West Bank.
Right, thank you so much, Patricia, for that question. Our next question is from the residents of Sam Martin Road. They want to know that blighted properties have been a concern since the Great Flood of 2016. What is the plan for blighted properties and unauthorized dumps?
Yeah, I'm going to pass this on to Ricky Compton so he can talk about what code and ordinances changes we've been making in that area of blighted property.
Thank you, Parish President. So recently, the council adopted a new set of ordinances that will enable our building department as well as code enforcement to better handle and address blighted properties. I do not believe it is the elected body's desire to go out and just start knocking houses down and removing people's property because they believe that that property has value. But we do have a lot of properties around the parish that are affecting property values. They do bring down the quality of life of the residents in those communities, and these new ordinances that we've passed are part of the International Building Code, and they are a standard that is accepted across the country. And we're looking to increase our ability to enforce those rules and regulations. So, you know, it doesn't happen overnight. Dealing with blighted properties and condemning structures does take a long time, but we are moving in a positive direction.
All right, thank you so much. Sally from Prairieville is asking that she is excited to see the first dog park in the parish. What about other new recreation facilities or bike and walking paths?
Yeah, I was excited to be at the ribbon cutting. This is why we brought on Michael King, so we'll go ahead and hear from him on some of the exciting things we have in recreation and what we're working on.
Yeah, thanks for that question. That's awesome. We have a lot of really good things that we're working on coming up here. Was out at the dog park, it was great, we're happy to have it. But we are definitely looking to add, ask specifically about bike and walking trails, so we're excited that we were able to get a grant for the Mississippi River Levy Trail. We're going to be working on that very soon. We're actually also working with Capital Region Planning Commission to a master plan for bike trails in the entire Ascension Parish area and extending and hopefully connecting to surrounding parishes. So we're excited about that as well. We're also working on just major upgrades to our parks as it stands now, so working on field conditions, as was talked about earlier, everything in terms of upgrading backstops and just kind of the look of our parks and looking at new ways to offer new amenities, new programming, a lot of more health and wellness activities, some more passive recreation for you to do out in the parks. And then we're working a little bit more on, as we were talking earlier, with green infrastructure and drainage projects and kind of working across departments to kind of offer a few more things wherever we can. We're very excited about a lot of the projects we have coming up.
That's awesome. Speaking of development, we have a question in the queue from Anora. Prairieville is an unincorporated community with the highest growth rate in the region. How can we be a real community and have control over our community's development or not without the powers of being incorporated?
Yeah, this was something that was looked at several years ago, and that's a good question. And I think the best path forward is to get in touch with your council members and tell them what changes and what avenues you want to go and what regulations you want changed, and then get support of other residents to support those ideas. One of the issues with incorporation of Prairieville is you have to have a sheriff's department, you have to have a lot of different resources that are simply not available. And so it's just more than just incorporating and taking control of your regulations and ordinances. It requires creating departments and governmental structure and as well as a sufficient tax base in order to run the whole thing. So it was looked at, but I think that due to tax concerns and the way it would be set up and what's required to become incorporated wasn't feasible. So the other option would be to start floating ideas on what changes you want to see in Prairieville. And that's what this is about. This is a listening tour. This is about you telling us what you want. What are those ordinance that you want changed to Prairieville? What do you want Prairieville to be? This is your opportunity to let us know as elected officials what you want. And so, yeah, I can't touch base on incorporation much more than that, but yeah, this is where we want to know what you want Prairieville to look like in the future, because this is our opportunity to change those code ordinances. So I do appreciate the questions, and we need your input. We need you to take part in the direction we're moving in Ascension Parish government.
All right, thank you so much, Anora. Tommy from Galvez is asking, what is the fastest way to get a drainage ditch cut?
So we've had issues of it being so wet. First, we had record number of storms in 2020, and in 2021, we had a record number of rain, the most rain we've ever had since we've been keeping records. Now, that sounds like excuses, and I guess it could be. But it's hard to get off-road and rut up people's property to cut the grass. It's just difficult. And I think we're choosing to do two things that I would hope will alleviate those issues in the future. And then I want to touch base on the fastest way to do it. One is we're going to keep our vegetation from doing sandbags. With the record number of storms and the weather we had in the last two years, we had our vegetation doing sandbags because that's the only ones that we had that could do them at that park. We're looking at other resources to do our sandbags, to have those pre-filled sandbags for our residents. So our vegetation will no longer be doing that at all. They will be strictly just waiting to cut grass. When it's too wet, we're going to focus on road. And we're going to a four quadrant system that we used to use in the past. That's going to get our vegetation crews used to what they cut on a yearly basis. They get to know their routes, they get to know their channels, they get to know their obstacles, and that should improve overall vegetation. I can tell you this, it is very important to me that we see a drastic improvement to ditch cutting in 2022. It will be a priority for me. And so I expect to see drastic improvement. Now, the quickest way to do it is to call our call center at 450-1200. That number again, 450-1200. Put in a work order. That way it's tracked, you have that number, and you can look at when that, at what stage that work order is in, and that is the quickest way to have it done. So excited for you to use the call center and let's get that channel or ditch cut.
All right, just a reminder, if you would like to participate in a way that residents have been currently doing, press star three, and you have the opportunity to have your question submitted into the queue for Parish President Quintmont to answer directly to you. We're going to move forward to Jonathan from Gonzalez asking, what is being done to help relieve traffic?
So, two things. The most important thing is to manage growth. We have a very meager budget in transportation. It's about eight to 10 million, depending upon the year, in transportation. We have thousands of roads and countless miles to maintain, and it's just going to take time to do those projects. As I mentioned before, we're $1.25 billion behind. So how do we speed that process up? We focus on grants. We focus on expanding that eight to 10 to as much as we possibly can through grants, through state spending, through federal spending. I think we have gotten very aggressive of late, and certainly in the last two years since I've been in office, going after grants. Unfortunately, these things don't happen overnight, but we have been very aggressive, and I'm hoping to see safety whitemings, additional overlays, and major transportation projects. Imagine if we can improve and have another interchange, taking traffic off of 73 and off Highway 30. Well, I mean, what does that mean for our residents in getting to work and getting home? Major improvements. As these roundabouts start coming online that we've been working for, for years and years, that's going to improve our traffic. But again, we need to stay aggressive, keep getting aggressive with every grant possibility out there, and that's our goal, managing growth. I mean, how, when you keep adding subdivisions or apartments, what are you doing to compensate for the amount of, take a 200-home subdivision, two cars per home, average, 400 more cars in that area? What changes have we made to compensate for that? Now add two or three of those subdivisions. Now you've got 1,200 cars. What have you done? Have you chosen to grow with your infrastructure, or have you chosen to grow beyond your infrastructure? And I think those are the hard questions we're asking now and need to be asked because we don't want to grow so much that we become gridlocked, because we certainly don't have the funds to keep up. So we need to grow better. We need to grow more responsibly while we're doing these infrastructure projects, while we're being aggressive and going seek grant money and funding. So it's that two-part. It's being aggressive on funding and projects, making sure those projects get done as quickly as possible. Utility relocation is a huge issue for us due to a lack of planning over the past three decades. If we were to plan those utility corridors, we wouldn't have to be paying major money and having the time delays and moving those utilities, but we didn't. And again, there's no time machine that's available to me to go back and fix it. We have to start today so that in 20 years from now, those benefits become reality. And that's where we're working on. But it's going to be, it's going to take those two things, being aggressive with funding, making sure projects happen, and grow more responsibly.
All right, thank you, Parish President. I want to remind you guys, if you want your question submitted with a chance to being answered, and you're joining us live on any of these platforms, dial 833-946-1533 and press star three to be entered into the queue for a chance to have your question answered. Right now, we're going to take a question from Sarah from online. What is being done about the tires left around the roads on the West Bank? They're an eyesore.
Yeah, so I'm going to pass this on to Regina. And I know we've got some programs in place, but Regina, if you want to touch base on the tires and what we're doing to help pick those up.
Thank you, Parish President. We currently have a crew out that's going around with the trailer, picking up the tires. We have our tires center partially open where the residents can bring the tires to us. But for now, we're going out picking the tires up outside the road. We've gotten with the engineers to work on our recycling center, so that way we'll be able to open a recycling center and the residents will be able to bring the tires and drop them off. At West Ascension Drainage Department of Public Works.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, you know, it is an issue. We get calls about it. Our crews are doing the best they can to keep up. I think we've got a couple of bad actors that contribute to this issue. We're going to work with other agencies to try to combat that. And, you know, we could use our residents' help, but we're going to do everything we can to clean up the tire situation on the West Bank.
All right, Samantha from Prairieville asking, how many parish employees are there?
Well, I'm going to pass that on to our CFO. He should have that accurate number.
Thank you, Mr. Parish President. Actually, it just so happens we were doing some staffing analysis this week, and we currently have 434 filled positions in the parish that are under the direct control of the parish president. We have about 500 budgeted, so we do have some positions that are vacant. And so I think between now and the end of the year, you're going to see some recruitment efforts. I'm going to plug our website. Please go to our website, look for any job opportunities. I think between now and January 1st, you might be seeing some vegetation, some drainage. We may even have a career fair. We want to make sure that we reach out to everybody and try to fill positions that we need to get the work done. In addition to those that are under the direct control of the parish president, we have about another 187 that are in the budget. Those are for entities like fire departments, for the sheriff. So we're looking at about 700 positions that are in the budget, and then HR, because they do a lot of work for the parish employees. There's a number of other employees that are either volunteer firefighters, they may be sports officials. There's about 850 total people that they do work for in HR. So total about 850, with almost 500 of those being under the control of the parish president.
Yeah, I don't think that people understand, you know, that's a large number. Why do you have 450-something people? That's a huge number. We're a large corporation. We have a 130 roughly million-dollar budget, and that's a lot of different departments. That's finance, that's recreation, that's a drainage department, East and West Bank, that's in HR, that's mental health, that's jail, that's maintenance on all our facilities. Parish government has to take care of all the buildings. We own them. So we have to maintain. This courthouse we're sitting in today is our responsibility. And so it requires a lot of employees, our overlay crews, you know, the ones that we have, subgroups, our boat crews that go out and clean our channels. This is a massive organization. There's no doubt about it. And you've got to have superstars at the top. And I think we're well on our way putting the right people in the right places to ensure that we're maximizing our opportunities here in Ascension Parish.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go to Daryl from online. Daryl says, I saw another plant approved. What are the plants doing for us in return for their credits?
It's a great question. So, yeah, you saw the $4.5 billion Air Products Plant, the carbon capturing. We've got a lot of different expansions going on in our plant system. So I remember my dad telling me when he lived in Baton Rouge, what was Gonzales? You know, what was Gonzales when he was, well, it was, the only time you had real money in Gonzales is when the strawberry crop came in. That's when you had any real currency here. So, you know, we saw our first plants come in in the 60s and 70s and grow from there, provide $100,000 jobs. Those families that rely on that get to spend their money locally. They go out to eat, they go out and buy things locally, they contribute to softball and baseball games and football. And we're the richest parish in the state per capita income. I want you to think about that, how blessed we are here. And so we begin to think, okay, well, what is our budget? How is it affected by the plants? Over 60% comes from tax revenues from the plants. Over 60% comes from tax revenues from the plants. That's not, you know, and you think about all the sub businesses supporting those plants. And you, and you think about those, those companies and who they employ. When you, when you ask anyone in this parish if they know someone who works at the plant, a friend, a family member, the answer is yes. And, and it, it adds a tremendous amount to our economy here. And, uh, we're blessed. Obviously, we, we have to ensure that we're growing, uh, along the river responsibly. And, uh, I think we're doing that. We speak to managers. But, um, we are the richest parish per capita income per resident, uh, in the state. And, um, and our school systems, our teachers that are employed here, our whole school board budget, if you took the plant system out of that, I, I, I would, I would, it would be a scary reality of what our school system would look like on how deficient it would be in educating our children. And we all know our edu-, our children are our future. So what happens to that education system? Sheriff's Department. How much does it rely on, on that tax base? A tremendous amount. How many officers are you willing to take off the streets? Because that's what you're talking about when you're talking about how are they contributing? Well, they're probably putting more officers on the street, more cars, more patrols. So, yes, we want to grow responsibly, but the plants offer us a tremendous amount of flexibility here in Ascension Parish. And, um, it's important we work with them. Thanks.
All right, thank you so much, Daryl, for submitting that question. I hope that, uh, you got the answer that you needed. And thank you so much for participating. Before we move forward, I want to remind you, if you want your question answered like Daryl and you are watching on any of our live platforms, dial 833-946-1533 and press star three to have your question submitted. Now, before we go to the next question, we will now take our second polling question. I will first read the question aloud and review the possible answers. Then I will repeat the question so you can select your desired answer. Poll question number two. Thinking now about the quality of life in the parish of Ascension, how would you say it has progressed, if any, in the last four years? The four possible answers are gotten better, stayed the same, gotten worse, or you're undecided. Again, thinking now about the quality of life in the parish of Ascension, how would you say it has progressed, if any, in the last four years? Press one to select gotten better. Press two to select stayed the same. Press three to select gotten worse. And press four to select undecided. The question again, thinking now about the quality of life in the parish of Ascension, how would you say it has progressed, if any, in the last four years? I'll read the answers one more time. Press one to select gotten better. Press two to select stayed the same. Press three to select gotten worse. And press four to select undecided. We have another question now online from Chantel. Donisonville is smaller than other parts of the parish, but is there something the parish can do to inform our citizens in this area about more of the initiatives underway? Can we have more listening tour meetings in our area?
Yeah, absolutely. We plan on doing this annually. Um, this is, this is important for me, just to hear from you and talk about those, those, uh, what, that progress we're making. And it's important to hear from you on how that progress affects you. And so, yeah, we're, we're looking forward to that. Um, we, we had our open meetings there, uh, on the West Bank. We had, um, our sewer meetings there, uh, listening concerns. I was able to talk to several residents that came to those public meetings and those open meetings. Um, so, yeah, listen, it's equally important to attend a council meeting on the West Side. That's your public meetings. So we encourage you to come along and, and voice and, and talk about, you know, the things that you want to see on the West Bank and, and we, and, and listen to some of the things that we're, we're working on there. Um, but, yeah, we, these things take time. When you're talking about bringing more jobs or, um, greater things to a, a community, it's a lot, it's, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of time, and it's a lot of commitment. But what, but the great thing is we're seeing that. And we're not only seeing it from parish government and our council members, but we're seeing it from the Sheriff's Department. We're seeing it from the school board. We're seeing it from the library board. And that's the great thing, that, that, because when we all come together is when we really succeed. So I encourage the citizens of the West Bank, please come to, come to a council meeting on the West Bank. Those are your meetings. And, and talk to your elected officials, talk to me, express your concerns, and, uh, just a great opportunity to meet you one-on-one.
Thank you, Chantel. I hope that answered your question. We have another question from Amanda from Sorento. How do we get our waterways cleared? They were bad before the hurricane and they're even worse now.
Yeah, so, um, our waterways, I'm assuming we're talking about major channels. So in January, January, February, the, the first quarter of 2020, when I took office, uh, established a boat crew. And, um, their, their goal was to go ahead and start, uh, ensuring that our major channels were open at each of our structures. I probably do a poor job of showing their successes and I need to do better and I need to do better, me. Because a lot of these projects are not in public view. You don't get to see the work they're doing on a channel back in a wooded track that's got a critical blockage that they're opening up so that you don't flood. You know, you don't get to see that now with Ida, it set us back. But we've got federal funding to go in and get us back to zero and then get us back to our regular maintenance of our major channels. Uh, we're investing in equipment to do that. Uh, shredders, grapple, uh, attachments for our, our, uh, excavators. We're getting better, better at our maintenance. We've got a long way to go, there's no doubt about it. And maintenance is critical for me. It's critical. But I also need to show you what we're doing and what we're accomplishing and what you're not seeing. That's on me. And I got to do better because our crews are getting it done. They're working hard. I got to do a better job of showing you what they're doing, and I'm going to do that. And we're going to start at our drainage meeting, making those presentations about what we got done during that month, including weekly updates on Facebook. So we're going to do a better job of showing what we're getting accomplished. And, because it's important for me to show you how hard our crews are working for you and what they're getting accomplished. So stay tuned, we're, we're about to blast that out.
Okay, thank you so much for answering that question. We have another question from Dana from Galvez. What is being done to help with flooding issues in our parish?
So several things. I'm going to let, uh, Ron Savoy touch base, uh, on some of our major projects, as well as Regina on the West Bank on what, what we're doing, especially with Hurricane Ida, as well as our big projects. But, um, two things. One, we're going after projects. We had our first major dredging project in a long time on New River, the first portion. We're about to start part two. Fish and Frog, those, those two 12 by lo-, locks are about to be put in. Uh, we're about to start construction on Low Ridge Levy Extension. In addition to that, we do our work order system, cleaning out debris and going on when they call 450-1200 and they put that work order in. We have crews that go out and clean culverts. It's a relatively small crew. They are tens of thousands of culverts for us to clean, but we do have a crew that's dedicated to doing that every day. Uh, they try to pick up trash at the same time. But they're making sure that that water gets from the house, away from the house, into the ditch, into the minor drainage, into the major drainage and out of our parish. That is the goal. And that is, the more maintenance we do, the easier it gets for us to put into that maintenance plan. But we're developing that. But I do want to let Ron touch base on all the things that we're working on here in the East Bank and then pass it on to Regina to talk a little bit about the West Bank projects.
Thank you, Mr. President. As echoing some of what he said, um, you know, we also talked about the number of staff and employees that we have within the parish, in layers in government. So I'm over the vegetation management group and the drainage department. And a lot of times at the flip of a switch, we need to be ready to man the infrastructure of the parish. So we have the three pumping stations, Marvin Bro Henderson Bayou and Sorento Pumping Station and the Flood Gate in Frog Bayou and Bluff Swamp. And so at any given time, in any event that the parish faces, our number one priority is having that infrastructure on ready, uh, for the residents. So, uh, we do a great job at that and I want to definitely give kudos to the staff for that. In addition to that, the capital projects, uh, that we've gotten is getting really aggressive with regional approach to, um, projects. And so with that, we've secured funding, federal funding for, as earlier mentioned, Highway 22 and value of around 45 million dollars in partnership with the, uh, Punch Train Levy District. And so we've secured that grant and that'll be moving forward. And, uh, the Marvin Bro Pump Station and Levy Protection System. So we hear about the Low Ridge Levy Extension that's been on the books for years. Uh, it's set to start construction in early 2022. In addition to that, we've received federal funding in the value of 57 million, um, from the mitigation funds from the 2016 flood. That will be brought to fruition and going out for RFQ in 2022. And, uh, we'll enhance all the levees and bring them to a standard that will protect much more, uh, backwater flooding in areas of Sorento, AC Santa Mal, Preville, Galvez. And then that will tie into another capital project, uh, for the Sorento and southern end of the parish with the Storm Surge Protection Project for the Bayou Conway and Panama Watershed. And so we've got us a, a secured funding source with Punch Train Levy District and the East Ascension Drainage District, uh, moving forward in partnership to seek funding for that project, which would then give the southern part of the parish a, a pumping system, uh, for flood control there. So, uh, we are aggressively seeking funding, uh, in all areas of flood protection. And as he mentioned earlier, the west part of the parish, northwestern end, uh, the Fish Bayou Project is under construction and is moving forward to help out the Bluff Swamp and the western end of the parish. In addition to all of these projects that we mentioned, we've also moved forward with the Drainage District and the Council with the Flood Plane Management Plan. They are modeling all of our infrastructure and waterways for our drainage, which is going to produce data that will then show our existing condition of all of our waterways and tell us what the best, uh, valuable projects will be to help us multi-budget for the next five, 10, 20 years out for our drainage projects and tell us where we need to go for as a, uh, drainage plan as far as future capital projects. And the maintenance of, of day-to-day operations, as the President said, is, is mainly stemmed from the work order system. And, uh, call that 450-1200 number if you have a drainage problem or concern. And our group will certainly address it and try to take, uh, your situation under consideration. So that's a quick overview of everything that we've got going on. And thank you for the opportunity to answer.
Over on the West Bank, we're currently cleaning out the culverts and checking the, the road ditches, the drainage ditches, the off-road ditches, removing trees that fell from Hurricane Ida. We have, we're currently digging on the Irish Canal, cleaning out the Irish Canal. We have a shredder here where we're going to go in and do some cleanup, shredding up trees in that area. We have back trucks that come through to pump out, to blow out the culverts and anything that's stacked up with the drainage. We have an issue with, um, beaver dams. We're locating and removing beaver dams currently to open up the drainage in the Modas, Aben and Lemonvale area. We went through and we're going to start doing it on an annual, cleaning out the road ditches and off-road ditches with it and just to make sure that we don't leave out none of the road drainage, ditches, off-road ditches being cleaned out.
Okay, and I do want to touch base on, um, a, a couple of other things that we, we, we didn't mention. Their future projects, uh, as well as, um, the flood plane management and what that's going to do for us. So when you look at, um, Man Shack and what took place back in May in the Spanish Lake and Bluff Swamp, not being able to get the water into Man Shack, get it to the Amet River. So we've got a tremendous amount of work going on in Man Shack now. Now, does that only help Spanish Lake and Bluff? No, it does not. At Welsh Gully, Cotton Bayou, Muddy Creek, that's going to improve all of those drainage structures flowing into Man Shack to get to Amet River, reducing flooding problems in the northern part of our parish. And, uh, we've been very aggressive in Man Shack lately and we're going to continue to be until we have that thing flowing as, as well as possible. We're looking at further, um, money through the Louisiana Watershed Initiative, channelization and some dredging in areas of, of, uh, Man Shack. And that should help, um, relieve that water. Um, in addition to that, also with the Louisiana Water, uh, Watershed Initiative, working with our neighboring parishes, the EBR, IberVille. Um, we're looking at three pumping stations in the, in the future. We're working on those concepts now. One would be in, uh, St. Gabriel to help with, uh, Bayou Fountain. And in that area, uh, reducing that water going into the Mississippi River, not having to go into Man Shack. IberVille would be at Willow Glen, modifying that facility to pop into the Mississippi River, therefore reducing that water from IberVille going into Man Shack. That would also help Ascension and EBR. Um, we're also looking at our own internal project, uh, which is a five parish benefit project on the Highway 74 diversion and, um, New River Pumping Station in the Marvin Bro Basin. So what that does is, um, when the Spanish Lake Basin gets too high, we would able, and that's above elevation seven, um, getting closer to flood stage. A lot of the older homes, uh, very, very old, would be at, at elevation 10. Uh, some of the newer homes would be at 11 and even the most recent would be closer to 12. Um, so, but elevation seven is when we'd initiate pull down, uh, before we even get to those critical levels. And we would divert that water into New River and then we would pump it into the Mississippi River, with a pumping station at, um, New River. Now, this would only be done when New River would be able to accept that water so that we would not have any jeopardy of our residents in Dutchtown, Geismar, Gonzalez or Santa Mal. Okay, we wouldn't, we wouldn't operate until we know that safe conditions can exist for us to go ahead and divert that water. With that being said, when that's, when we're not diverting water from Spanish Lake, the New River Pumping Station will allow us to pull water from Geismar, Dutchtown and the western side of Gonzalez and pump it into the Mississippi River. What that does is, it doesn't put any water in IberVille, it doesn't put any water in, in EBR, it doesn't put any water in Livingston, and it doesn't put any water in St. James. And of course, we benefit internally. It is a five parish regional benefit, huge. I would say monumental in scope. Also, our Sorento Surge Protection Project. We all know about the West Shore Project where Ascension and St. James got left out of the West Shore Project. Well, we've been working on funding to ensure that we have that protection on our southern edge and working with St. James to ensure that our levy systems connect and we have added protection for both our residents in St. James and Ascension. So we're looking at a two pumping station, uh, or at least a, a increase or, um, upgrade in the Sorento Pumping Station and a new pumping station at Panama Canal with a levy system to provide surge protection on the southern part of our parish. When you do that, further down the wrong road, a long time from now, you could put a, um, pumping station at the end of Conway to pump into the Mississippi River. That would be decades off now. So that's not in reality, but the Sorento Surge Protection Project is currently reality. And we're looking to get started on that as soon as possible, starting, tying into the Marvin Bro, uh, levy system and, um, uh, working, uh, close with St. James to ensure that we're all getting the added protection that we deserve on our southern and, uh, eastern part of our parish. So those two projects, I would honor to say, if we can have both those done, that's even as monumental as the Marvin Bro Pumping Station and Levy System. That's how big it is. To be able to have a gravity system on the southern end of our parish controlled under pumps, to avoid having surge protection issues, to be able to pump down for storms, to be able to put that water in the Mississippi River where it has a five parish benefit, is monumental in scope. We all know that this has been looked at in the past and what have we heard? It's not, not able- It's not, not able, it's not feasible. Well, it is. It's possible, and we're looking at doing it. And we're gonna aggressively, we're gonna aggressively go after that project, and we're gonna do everything we can to ensure it gets done. So the flood plane management. And listen, it's hard to get up here and tell you everything that we got going on in drainage, because there is so much. But our flood plane management is looking at 2D modeling of our entire parish. What that means is, we can get a visual representation of every inch of water, and then of rainfall, and then every foot of data that we can use to help us grow responsibly. In addition to that, they're modeling all of our major channels. They're gonna let us know where our weaknesses are, where we need to expand those channels to push more water in each Man Shack, Henderson, Spanish Lake Basin, Marvin Bro, Conway, Panama. Just ride around and look at how many canals we have to maintain, how many structures in those canals, in a single canal, how many bridges, how many culverts, that are failing, that now, we had no idea when we were putting these things in for the last three decades, that all of a sudden they would start faltering and eroding. Now we gotta go replace all those. And now we've changed our ordinances to where you can only put in corrugated aluminum or PVC. So we've made those adjustments, but we still gotta go fix all those problems that have occurred over decades. Takes time, takes personnel, takes money. And I don't, I don't think we do a good enough job in showing those successes to our residents, but that's gonna change, because we're gonna make, I'm gonna make that a priority. And we're gonna show you what we're getting done on a monthly, not an annual. I don't need to do an annual, because we get so much done in a month, just a month will shock you. So we're gonna do a monthly report at our drainage meeting of how much we're getting done, so that our residents can know we're working hard for you, and we're gonna tackle this thing, and we're gonna get better and better at it.
All right, thank you so much for the details on how we're evolving as a parish. We are getting near the end of our live event here, so if you wanna get those questions in, it may not be able to be answered, but go ahead and get it in anyway. We wanna see what you think, and we do have an online forum where we can get that to you outside of this event. If you're watching on any of our platforms, be it Ascension 21, Facebook, or even ascensionlistens.com, you wanna go ahead on and call 833-946-1533 to submit your question. You just press star three, and we'll do our best to get that question answered. Now, before we go through with any more questions, we're gonna take a look at the answers to our second polling question. That question was, would you say that over the past four years, the quality of life in the parish of Ascension has gotten better, stayed the same, or gotten worse? Due to the participants that we have online, this is what you guys think. 21% say it's gotten better. 29% say it's stayed the same. 29% also say it's gotten worse, and 21% of the residents of Ascension Parish are undecided. Parish President, do you wanna touch on the results of this poll briefly, so that we can get to our last couple of questions?
Yeah, absolutely. That feedback's very important. Obviously, when you look at the first poll, what was the most important? Traffic and drainage. What has contributed to those issues? Growth. So we gotta focus on responsible growth, where we grow with our infrastructure and not outgrow our infrastructure, because that's where the two problems now
Hello, this is the event for the Ascension Parish event. Please stay on the line. If you have a question, please press star three. Hello, this is the event for Ascension Parish. Please stay on the line and press star three if you'd like to ask a question.
Two decades, it's the number one issue. And there's others, we're aware of them, we're working on them, but we need to continue to have these conversations with you, so that we can grow, can have that, that 29% shrink some. Thanks.
All right, we're gonna take it back to our online questions. We have a question from Bridget. Thanks for the online system for reporting power outages and debris. Will this always be used? I don't remember seeing this before.
No, this was brand new. We're excited, that's, that's coming out of our IT department. Brian Martinez is one of our superstars. He developed that system for us. You know, that's gonna be something we use and improve on. It's the first time, and it was very helpful. Our feedback from our residents, including this caller here, has been positive, so we're gonna continue with that, and we're gonna continue to build. Also, in our post-storm review, we looked at how we, not only how we handled the storm, but how utility companies handled. How was, how was that communication with them? What can we do to improve our utility infrastructure? How we handled health concerns? How we can get better at that? How do we utilize all our facilities in this emergency situation? So we go post-storm and we analyze all that, and we look to make changes for the next storm, in the next year, the next hurricane season, so we get better and better on how we handle these things. And that's the ultimate goal. We always are trying to step back and take a look at how we're doing, and be critical of ourselves, so that we're always approving, and we're always getting better. And that's the ultimate goal. So, super excited you enjoyed the service, and you can plan on seeing it in the future. Thanks.
All right, Bridget, thank you so much for submitting that question. We're gonna now go to Veronica. Does the parish have any boat launches? And what about for
Yeah, this is part of the recreation. This was part of several proposals. So I will turn it over to our recreation gurus over here, but I will tell you that, you know, we do have some launches. Fred's being one, that we took over from DOTD after they've made the improvements there. I wouldn't suggest launching a kayak at Fred's, but that is one of our parish launches. And as far as the kayaking and things of that nature, I'll pass it on to our Recreation Director.
Yeah, so we do have that launch, as well as the one, we have PJ's Landing and Laurel Ridge. Again, similarly, they may not be the best areas to launch kayaks, although you could from there. We are looking at feasibility of adding new kayaks to some of our current park locations that back up to waterways, and we're also looking at trying to develop a plan on what waterways are navigable, particularly by kayak, canoe, things of that nature, so that we can put together more of a blueway system, and maybe connect into some of our, our major waterways. But we are looking into that now, and adding some kayak launches. I believe we've budgeted for a few of them over the next two years, to go ahead and start adding some of those in.
Yeah, I wanna add to that a little bit. So what we're doing also is, part of our drainage program is looking at projects that we can do, large retention ponds, and when I mean a pond, I mean a lake, I mean something massive, to where it not only serves a recreational purpose such as kayaking, but also serves a drainage purpose. And so we're, we took a trip, or some of our Drainage Board members arranged a trip for us to go to Harris County, and we learned a lot about some of those projects that they had recreation slash drainage, and it benefited both. And so we're looking at that here in Ascension, and we're pursuing funding for those opportunities. So, yeah, hopefully, we're able to grab one of those projects and have a lake-type drainage slash recreation, where you can go and kayak in a lake, and it's also utilized for drainage as well. So that's something to look forward to, and we're gonna aggressively look at those options. That's it.
All right, Veronica, I hope that answered your questions. Thank you so much for participating. We're gonna go now to Dennis online, who says, will you do live events where we can ask our questions in person?
Yeah, we had some. We had several. Santa Mole Gym, Dutchtown Elementary Gym, Central Middle Gym, West Bank, we have one there. So we've done several, but yes, we're gonna do these annually. It's important to hear from you. That's one of my major campaigns, is open communication with our public. So, yeah, look forward Pay attention, we'll be posting Hope to see you there.
...this journey with us. We're gonna take our last question from James online. Are there any programs for kids for arts, music, or dance? If not, why not?
Okay, I'm gonna put this over to our Director, Michael King. Something we're working on, huh, Mike?
Yeah, it's definitely something that we're working on. In fact, I guess, earlier, at the very beginning of this year, we, we actually took a survey of what kind of programs y'all are interested in, and those were among the top. Basically, a lot of stuff that's not sports, right? So recreation isn't just sports, and I've kinda been trying to preach that.
Hello, this is the event for Ascension Parish in Louisiana. Please stay on the line, and we will, we will be back shortly. If you have a question, please press star three. Thank you.
Really appreciate you taking your time to join us this evening for the Listening Tour. This was hopefully a productive way to interact with parish leadership. If you have any questions that did not get addressed, those questions on our website, ascensionlistens.com, and someone will follow up with you. Thank you so much again for participating. I'm gonna pass it to Parish President Clint Quintmaw for any closing words and remarks for our first virtual and live Ascension Listens Tour.
Yeah, I'm super excited about this opportunity to reach people who can't make the in-person meetings. Obviously, with COVID, it was a challenge. Matter of fact, I had to miss one, because I got COVID, and I tested at the door, and the scanner went off. So I had to leave, and my CAO, John Diaz, took over for me. So, you know, we look forward to hearing from you. This is critical. It's critical that we hear from you to know, we are your representatives, and that feeds through me down to my administration. So it is critical that we hear from you with these type of events. Also, wanna encourage you to come to council meetings, and come to board meetings, and Recreation Committee meetings, and other meetings, to get involved and talk about the things that you want in your community, in your parish. And excited to hear from you. That feedback is critical for us. It drives us at work every day, and often allows us to take a look at where we're at, what we're doing, and where we're headed. So we appreciate that feedback from you. We thank you, and we continue looking forward to serve you.
Night. We just wanna let you know again that we are so grateful. If you have any extra questions, we do have ascensionlistens.com. That forum is always up, where you can submit your comments. They will get to Parish President. We are not ignoring you. So submit your questions online throughout the year. Again, we wanna practice transparency and being able to bridge the gap from our government to you, the residents. Thank you so much for participating with us, and enjoy the rest of your evening. Good night.